We're, we're trying not to talk yet. We're waiting on a minute. Let's go ahead and call our work session in. Um, let's open this up with prayer. Our dear Lord, we love you. Thank you for a wonderful day. We ask that you bless us, watch over us. We ask that you bless all the households that are represented here this evening. We ask that you watch over the business of the city and that the business glorify your name. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. All right. First thing on is consideration of alcohol license. Uh, Mark, do you want to take this one up?
Jamie, go ahead and step forward with this here. Um, he is applying for, um, liquor beer and wine. Obviously, he won't be opening up until twenty twenty-four. And, uh, so that will be forthcoming. He's just trying to get the process going. So that he'll pay that fee and then go ahead and apply for the state, but he won't pay it until twenty-four, so he's not paying for it. So anytime he'll be opening bar. And with that, I'll let you explain your food truck part two while you're here.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna, uh, probably open my food truck January, February, March during the construction phase, I guess, on pretty weird days in the wintertime. Uh, just trying to get some traffic built up over there. Uh, getting the window painted for the lighting of the Christmas tree. I'll be out there serving some soup as well. Right around the restaurant. To try to let everybody know in the community I'm coming.
Do I have oysters on the food truck?
Oh, no, no. Right. It'd just be full. I should have these burgers and nachos and tacos and all those things.
And he'll just pull in to the alley right there where the driver was. Talk about your, uh, time frame now that's changed.
Uh, well, I'm hoping for February, but more likely March. Uh, we got the back of the house completed Sunday. Drawn out and now we're working on the front of the house. So hopefully that'll get done this week or probably done next week, but after Thanksgiving. And after that, after that, Blake should start and have a meeting with Brian.
Brian will go over all the different tasks and we're all on the same page.
Um, with this consideration of his alcohol license, as we don't see a lot of these, what's that process, Mark? Cause the process already been started.
Yeah, cause it's gotta be fingerprinted and everything, Food County.
Yeah, I went to the sheriff's department. I got my fingerprints done probably forty-four weeks ago.
Yeah, and we need approval denied.
Yes, and I'm in the process of getting my state license. That's gonna take a little longer than the office.
Anybody having conversations or questions over the alcohol license? What's the, what's the difference from state license and everything else?
It's just sort of required that you have a city and you also have to have the state.
Okay.
He can't get the alcohol delivered without that state documents. They won't give you time of day.
One hit your pocket twice, I guess.
City and state.
They gotta get their share. But I appreciate it. Looking forward to it.
Very good. Thank you.
Again, you don't have to stay if you don't want to. It's up to you.
All right. Next is consideration of approval of the quotes. Uh, Mark, you have those three invoices.
Yes. The first one is a twenty thousand dollar, uh, work for Keter Construction. They, that is for the roundabout. Brian had to go ahead and employ, so this work has been done. And, um, so they had four under two sections of the road. Basically, it's ten thousand dollars per horse. And, um, and this will come out of this loss for water and sewer. The next one, since we've already accepted this project, move forward. Do you need a vote to approve this?
Yes.
Since it's twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
The next one is work to be completed Hazel Creek Crossing. Um, now, what's come through the light in the last few weeks? Um, obviously Brian finished everything on the roundabout and he had a hundred and twenty-five days to complete his water relocations.
So, so everything, our obligations at the roundabout that we have to do are done.
They are. He did it in fourteen days. The superintendent called me, emailed me and said, wow. If they were on the other utility contractors that could do this work that's given a hundred and twenty-five days and do it in fourteen. And, uh, he was very appreciative of Brian and his crew that he wanted to hire him. I told him they weren't, that couldn't be done. And Brian proceeds about fourteen, twenty-one day time on Hazel Creek. But what has come out now is we may not have to move the water lines now. Because they decide further out, just in case, is what I'm being told through DOT and contractor. That they're only gonna use not as much air. So I've asked Turnip C to get that in writing to confirm that we don't have to do this. Um, and then in talking with Turnip C today, there may be a section we have to do, but not the whole lot. Um, so this right here would just be approving it in case we do need it or it can come back once we get there. But their range is seventy-five hundred to ten thousand dollars. They'll go through that creek. You're not just digging them. Basically, they're boring under the creek.
You know what that cost savings would be if we don't have to touch that water line?
Um, well, Brian's got all the pipe he needs. So it's just labor on there. And so I would say probably a twenty, thirty thousand dollar savings if we don't have to move it, just because Brian has the inventory of supplies. And, uh, they should have that meeting set up. He said, hopefully in the next two or three weeks with G dot and with the contractor.
Well, it might give us an opportunity to replace them when the water line doesn't need to be replaced instead of.
Brian had already started on that list. Because he had a list already. And so we started on that yesterday.
So by the time we get some good news from G dot. That's good.
The next one that's in here really has to be updated to a bit agenda. This is a, um, well, the first one is twenty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And what this is, I will read the explanation from Fletcher and from Kay on this work. Quote from Veola is pertaining to the replacement of the filter panels in the disc filter system at the water plant. The filter system consists of individual panels that filter the water before it is disinfected and discharged from the plant into Hazel Creek. This system removes total suspended solids and phosphorus as required by our N, NPV has permit through EPD. Typical life expectancy under these normal operating conditions for a filter panel is seven to eight years. These panels are currently in use, in use for installed in twenty fifteen. And are losing their effectiveness. The funds for these expenditures are, are available in the current budget. In this budget right here, they are getting, I don't know why the number is a hundred and eighty panels at a cost of a hundred and fifty-one dollars. So that's what they're looking for at that range and the, and the price comes up to twenty, almost twenty-seven thousand dollars. As, as Kay tried to explain this to me, I said, let's just write this out for me so I can have the exact terminology that I needed for that. So that's what we have there.
So this was a planned expense.
It wasn't a planned expense for this, but the money from other, other projects that didn't happen allowed for the money. And then the third one, the next one would be, I made the budget for MPE. For the, uh, design and location installation of overhead voice system for the plant. And the explanation from Kay on this one. We currently have one crane in place at the wet well that is not able to access all four of the pumps from one position. It is difficult to relocate for the purpose of pulling pumps for maintenance. Initially, we were looking into adding an additional crane unit on the other side of the wet well for use when pulling the submersible pumps for service. After reviewing our options, MPE is able to install a new voice system at a lower cost to the city and adding another crane unit. The voice system will be able to reach all four pumps at the wet well. The solution that MPE is able to provide will be easier and safer for employees when forming maintenance on the submissive, submissive, uh, pumps that would come at a savings to the city. And that's where this bid comes in of eighty-five hundred, but we'll have to amend the budget because that didn't come in in time. So we got two scenarios here of updating and maintaining the super plan. Um, this will also, this, this is also coverage in this one also in the budget. It just wasn't planned like this.
What's your recommendation?
That's right.
What's your recommendation, Mark?
Oh, that we move forward.
Is there any other further discussion? Does anybody think they can clean those panels?
And I do have one other amend, amend the budget for one other item. You know, a couple of months ago, we've done a lot of things with the banks. And, uh, we did administrator position for Megan to be able to do that for United Community. And now that we've got all these bank accounts being signed up for, to be ready to go on January second. She needs to be the same thing as put on as that. She does, they do not require a, um, a document for that. She used like, um, she, they will use her minutes from this meeting. And we give her the authority for the administrative role to make changes, discussions, if you have to do signature changes. She can authorize that.
These are budgets. Do you want to amend the?
Oh, yeah, the, yeah, the agenda, sorry. Thank you. So we would have those two amendments.
Yeah, add that on the number eight. All right, very good. All right, let's move on to discussion of the email thread, um, regarding eight, seven, six Central Avenue. John, want to take this one?
Sure. And as a disclaimer, I'd like to start with the fact that I have an implant in my ear and my hearing is not perfect. And because of that, there are words that I can misconstrue, such as red might be red. So whenever that happens, down that rabbit hole I go. And I have to kind of jump back to find out what's going on and be in the right spot. If you need us to repeat anything, feel free. That's one reason. The second reason is I've been most fortunate and then I have an excellent heart surgeon at Ember. And due to my wife's meticulous care and his supervision, I've gone ahead and go under the knife. And for myself, that is a tremendous asset and that my quality of life is much better. So go on. This issue regards my family, my property that my mother was born in, that our family has been in this city for over a hundred years. And paid water and sewer to this city since its inception. I also grew up on this property. So I know that there was never a well. And it's always been on the sewer. Now, my issue with this is that for everyone here to understand what it's like to be standing there when this all occurred. And then whatever decisions are gonna be made, you will make them. And those consequences will be forthcoming, whatever it is. That's just the way the world works. But I requested this be on here. This email thread, because Mark questioned my wife in, in the conversation. And so the council will have the facts to work with. We provided our service to this city for the past four years and spent more of our money than anyone I know of for the good of this town. To me, this is a public safety issue. With the simple fact this city exists for its citizens. And that's one of the functions of the city. The duty is to provide public safety. So what happened here was that no fault of anyone from hindrance trust. There was a calamity, to put it mildly. And this property owner is a trust. The trust is owned by my wife, May Hindrance, and myself jointly. It was specified by my father, May would make all the real estate decisions. And if my father were alive today, he would tell you the same thing. And he participated in the volunteer fire department as a citizen for public safety. And I went up there at sixteen years old and fought the fire with him when the apple fortune burned. Now, this sewer line, that's why my wife is in this conversation, to clarify that point. So we have to jointly agree on everything. So if there's any discussion, she has to be in it and she has to be a decision maker about it. That was related to Thomas. Thomas knows that. And in this circumstance, he was brought into this situation. So this sewer line exited the property ladder. And was cemented on. And I only found out that there was discussion about all this while I was out. And I have no privileged information about what went on, who set fire, or who did anything. So I'm here. Since no one asked me, reached out to me, I was the only one there really representing the city during all of this. Because there were many hats to be worn. Number one is a property owner. Number two, citizens who paid for water. They're gonna be displaced, not have a home to live in that day. And the liability for the city. As sitting here to protect every citizen we have. So some decision had to be made. The owner did not inform the city or anyone of his action to cement this off. I'm not gonna insult anybody's intelligence here about this email thread. You're a teacher. You have a graduate degree. Everyone can read. The facts were not presented completely or properly, as they had to be correct. The other sewer line, which has never been issued either, is I could not get the answer to where the tie-in was. The main alley goes behind the property. I could not get the answer to where the tie-in was. But yet Peabody College can get a camera up its pipe and find out that there are broken limbs and what the problem is. But I can't even know where the tie-in is. The city put that joint ladder off the property. Now, there's an alley there. I have no idea where the middle of the alley is. And how far that right of way goes. And the city chose to put that across there. So we have a public safety issue here. We have an environmental safety issue here. That was not caused by anyone on that side of the property line. And it's still not resolved. Because at this point, I do not know if there's been any, any action taken by the city to find out or by the county, what is the environmental impact? Is that so okay? In other words. You know what happens if we dump sewage even on a tremendous rainfally day? We're penalized. You can't do that. So this city is responsible. And as far as being sitting there, standing there, trying to sort this out, to me, was like being in the middle of Atlanta. Not like a place where you have a volunteer fire department. Not like a place where you know the name. Not like a place where you're gonna go help. No, no, no. As far as me not being able to speak to anybody in our water department, that is an infringement upon our constitutional right. And also, if anyone didn't wanna talk to me, they didn't have to pick the phone up. If anyone felt uncomfortable about me taking things as advised by my lawyer, that I always have the right to do if I'm in the conversation, particularly since I don't hear well. I don't have any problem taking anything because my story doesn't ever change. It's so I can understand what other people say. And also our charter. I'm in charge of the water department. So it's my job to go find out what's there and to report back to everyone. Because of what's gone on, I have not wanted to cause any trouble with any of these people. So therefore, if there's a problem and I have confidence it's bad enough, they'll call them. This is one of the most valued objectives that I accomplished as my service, as a citizen and to the city. It's for the respect of the people that I'm associated with. The second one is that my wife and I worked endlessly and tirelessly to have a place that when I grew up, I could look out at this same city, this building and see the park. And I spent my youth there sweeping the tennis courts that were cluttered. And now we have a better bathroom for other kids to play in and go and enjoy. And long after I'll be here, long after we're all here. Last one lasted sixty years. Hopefully this one will last a hundred and eighty. Now, it's still an environmental issue that had to be fixed at the moment. So what are the choices? Megan is not here. She was the only Sydney representative along with the water department representative when the information was found out. The person that found out the information, in case you don't know, these facts were the second company, of which after I received Mark's email on Monday, which was obvious that this was going nowhere. This was like, are you kidding me? So the second company came, they assessed the situation. They were going to blow out the line supposedly and guess what? That's when the information came to front. I came down the next morning, Megan came down, this cemented off. Got the information? Call property owner? No. Cannot come on the property. Cannot fix it? Sewerage company never there to do it? Still sewage leaking all over everywhere. My view with that hat on at that time is there are multiple things here and one of them is the city. What's best for the city? What's best for these people that are standing there? They're not gonna have a home tonight. So the obvious thing is when you're digging a hole, you gotta quit digging. So if you're dumping raw sewage out, then you gotta stop. You either gotta fix it, or these folks are gonna go homeless. And we all go spend the next few minutes, four, five, six, seven, eight months trying to figure out who did what and who's responsible and who's complaining to everybody. The city did not want to bring the equipment on to the property. As a property owner, I more than authorized that. Would have been happy to do it and it would have cost less. That is not what the city wanted to do. The city wanted the other company to do, to fix it. Of which it was told to me that there would be half. As far as I'm concerned, Hendrix Realty, our family, didn't have anything to do with this. And so this line has worked for a hundred years for whatever got put in. The water was nineteen thirty-seven, so I don't guess it was quite a hundred. I'm not sure when this sewage came out. But it always worked. And we all know water runs downhill. So a decision was made. The decision was made to put the line in and fix it. The city tied it in that day and line was put out on the side of where the property is. Now, that's where we are. And I'm here to answer any question anybody has about this. Since I was the only one there, nobody's asked me any question about why I.
So it's my understanding that when that cemented off, that your neighbor cemented that off, cut you off. And, uh, didn't notify you or anything. I think that would have infuriated anybody in this room. Um, and I think it's everybody's belief that you, you paid for a tap years ago or your family paid for a tap years ago. So there was no tap fee that we talked about, you know? That's completely understood. And then the conversation come up to meet halfway. And, um, y'all asked for the city to meet the sewer line halfway. And I, and I guess in my eyes, from that conversation coming up, I thought maybe the, the city trucks would come on and dig halfway and connect the pipe halfway. And, um, I guess the conversation went that the sewage company come and took it halfway and the view of the city being responsible for half of that, half of that pipe. So I guess the conversation comes into play is what is half?
Well, as far as the terms go, then the city can decide what they want to do. Naturally, I have to recuse myself from this. And that proposal can be presented. And as I said, that proposal has to be presented to the trust and that trust has to have both agree with what's going on. It still doesn't answer the major problem that this city has allowed a public safety hazard. The city was not informed, even. The city was not informed even that this was going to be done. So I don't even know where the middle of that alley is, the right of way, whether that pipe went onto that alley. In other words, that could've been the city. But I know the city, if it has an easement, I asked Megan to check if there was easement. No one seemed to be able to know. Also, if there wasn't easement, Thomas, whether it was abandoned? In other words, whether the city ever had it, it never had it, was it abandoned, was it not abandoned? So, these are questions, along with a soil sample, along with the public safety. Whatever needs to be decided, needs to be decided. Because the terms and the conditions were twenty-four hours when the bill came. So, it was paid. And it was to me and to trust, and it was paid in twenty-four hours. Now, this is linked, it's going on, it's going on, it's going on. No one asked me a thing about it. No one contacted in any way, shape, form, or fashion.
John, she had some light on something?
Yeah, absolutely.
John, I have similar issue with when you're talking about the college. There's a stump that filled up with toilet paper in my yard. And it was coming from the college. So, the college is the one who ran the, they didn't know where the pipes were. They still don't know where the pipes were in this town.
Right.
They were made so many years ago, and they are clay pipes, they have disintegrated. And it was a nightmare. And it appeared that from the college, the pipe came across the back of my, of my land. For so many years ago, and Jake, they didn't care.
Yes.
Well, the college ended up having to dig a whole nother way. Because I said, no, you're not coming across my land.
I understand. The point being also goes back to our infrastructure. We have an old town. It's been here for,
Thirty years.
Yes. And the infrastructure, when it puts in, we need to know what it is and where it is so we can go about having a map. So somebody needed on and said, oh, is that crosses here? Or we need to get an easement? The city has the power to protect the citizens. This is my point. And to protect those citizens, they have eminent domain. Just as we've talked about having people ride around our city and say it's not quite the way we look. Well, we also have problem in the fact that we need to be sure that we do everything we can for our citizens. Are they old, or they're not able to get out there? If there's some problem, we can work with people at college. We can work with the church to help them. And as a last resort, if it's a health hazard, if they're rats, and it's causing to hurt other people, then yes. It has to be condemned, it has to go through the proper channels. But, until then, there was a question, how we got in to this situation? And I've asked a question to go back in the minutes. It was originally in my memory to be a case-by-case basis. Have we done everything we can for our citizens? Have we reached out to them? If it has to be condemned, then that's one thing. But if not, have we helped our people? We exist to be here for our people. That's why we exist. So, this again, goes back to the infrastructure, to where we take time to know what we got, when we need to replace it. And this was a self-made health hazard, environmental hazard that had to be taken care of. And still has to be taken care of. There still has to be a check mark saying, yes, it's okay. The soil's okay, the line was done, it's all right now. You can't just ignore it, the city can. So as I said, out there, making that decision at that time, there was a commitment from the city to do this. And in my view, it was the best solution. Because it was, people didn't have to go homeless. There's no longer a health issue. It was stopped, and it was completed. Now's the time to go back and see how it can be made better. And who's responsible, and what the options are.
Thomas, do you wanna speak on that responsibility of that for a minute, as far as the responsibility of the raw sewage on that property? And where that discussion was at? And where we need to proceed with it?
The, I've gotten, I had told, I'd sent an email on the thirteenth of October to Dr. Hendricks, saying that there, there was additional investigation needed with regard to the,
What the agreement was in terms of what the city had agreed to pay.
And then, soon after that, got notice that Dr. Hendricks wanted to be heard on this agenda, so there's been no revision to the lease, and that's not been forwarded to the Hendricks Trust. Yeah, I've waited until this conversation was had. I was not aware that there'd been kind of spill on property. So, I suppose that needs to be looked at. There's questions to who's gonna be responsible for that. Sounds like the neighbor or the property owner is the one who created this problem. So if there's any issues, ultimately, the city can't be responsible with the Hendricks Trust. But if you're the creator of this problem. Beyond that, I don't have anything else to add.
What was your, what do you remember as far as the agreement being on the city's responsibility that day when that come out?
The only thing that I remember calling was discussion about the city paying half the cost. I think the city is half of what. And that's what has not been involved.
And I believe that Megan explored that and make sure that that was half, half of what. That's where that conversation was at, John. Make sure that that was just being checked off, agreed upon, half of what. And that's where the agreement landed. What did Megan come up with in her?
Well, let me back up just a little bit. I was out of town, and this came, so I dealt with this on the phone. What I agreed to Megan and to Gary, who was the representative of the water department, was what do we normally do when something has happened? He said, we would tap the line and run a line twenty feet to the right of it. That's what we would do. And I said, okay. On speakerphone, John and I never spoke directly to each other. I said, we can do that. There's option you have a sewer tap one day at a time, back in the future. That's fine, we'll run to the line, to the, to the right of way. So, after that, they relayed that. John at some point called Thomas, without me talking to Thomas about what I agreed to. When Thomas sent out the email saying, we're gonna split the cost. And I said, Thomas sent that out to all of y'all. And I said, no, that is not what I agreed to. And there wasn't another word said at that point. So, then the bill shows up, where John shows Megan that he paid his twenty-eight hundred dollars for this. And they're expecting the city to pay the other half. And I said, well, that's not what we, I agreed to. Because that's not normal practice. Why would we go on somebody else's property with our equipment and do private sewer work? John wanted to pay, that's fine. They did that three years for him, through the city manager, and John paid the bill. Because this Hendricks was calling to place a work order for the city people out there who work on this. Megan's like, that's not what we do. We may have done that in the past, but we don't do that anymore. We do not go on there with no reason. Or legally, Thomas, because we didn't stop up your line, you and your neighbor, your neighbor did. I think responsibility falls, or whatever, your neighbor caused the problem.
Well, if I could jump in right there. Megan was the one that spoke with Thomas. I didn't call Thomas about it.
Okay.
As the city representative, again, I was the one that said, Thomas needs to be involved. And Megan was the one that related to me and to the people there that the city would go half, because they did not want to come onto the property. Now, everyone assumed that it went down to the alley, where everything else is. Where the alley is, where the right of way is, where all the sewer lines are. But guess what? It went straight off the property. And the property owner, the property's responsibility is to the property line.
That's right, to the property line.
And the property line was this far. I mean, it's the length of a car, it's the length from, it's that far, that was the responsibility. I found that out, and I had a quote. And the quote to take the line from there to the end of the property was a thousand dollars. So I was already willing to pay an extra eighteen hundred dollars to solve this mess. Because there's raw sewage, and the city is responsible. If people dump out, the city has a responsibility for public safety. So when it occurs, then the city has to have a plan to fix it, or fix it in some way. If you get some truck down here that gets, carry chemicals, and it turns over, and there's a spill, you better believe that the fire department's gonna be there, the chief of police is gonna be there, everybody's gonna be stopped, nobody's gonna come close to that, and it's gonna be cleaned up.
It's a hazard where police and fire are handling that. That's not a sewer company coming onto property, property. That's two different things, John.
It's not, when it's an environmental issue. You can't dump raw sewage out onto a property.
Did not. Your neighbor did. Your neighbor did this. And why would they cut, why would they sewer you, why would they cement you off?
Why?
You didn't get along with them? I don't know.
You know, as far as all that goes, my family's lived on this property since nineteen twenty-eight. We live there peacefully, we never had any problems with anymore. I can't speak for why. I just had to deal with what it was. And what it was is raw sewage coming right. You wanna call the health department and see if that flies? You wanna call EPA and see if that flies? The city's responsibility was that line, he, to have an easement there. And in the past, there was no easement. And the city failed its responsibility there. So I'm sitting there as a property owner thinking, I paid taxes. I paid water. I paid sewer for over a hundred years. And now I can't get this fixed. I can't even find out where I'm, where I'm tied in. As a matter of fact, I'd like to find out where I'm tied in on the office above. Which I still don't have an answer to. Because I'm not convinced that that tie-in is the only tie-in. I'm not convinced that they did not run that down through there, towards that alley, and it's actually tied in somewhere down there. So, still don't have that question. I'd like that question answered, where the tie-in is, or eight sixty-four above it.
So, so you have some great question, or good comments first, as far as is the city being public service? I think, yeah, we all agree with that. I think everything should be case-by-case. Whether or not the city should extend their arm on the, our citizens' property lines and help with things. I think that's important, and we need to make sure that's handled on a case-by-case basis. I know there's some legalities in that, and Thomas may add something to that, but that's, that's, and I believe that, I think that's what he looked to. So, the question still exists is, you know, about that bill that we talked about. What, Megan, when Megan found out, I think she dug into that, that she was,
Well, there was cost for them to tear out concrete, because this line or something was underneath concrete. And so they got hours of work of looking and doing, so.
I can, I can jump in here and tell you, so. The initial estimate to go straight lateral, right across, and put a sewer line in there and leave it right there, was a thousand dollars. As you put the line in, tear the concrete up, put it back, and have it working. So that's what was done. And the idea was that, you know, they were gonna come jet it out, and that would've been the end of it. But guess what? When they went to jet it out, it was like a guy's three feet over the front of the line going straight up. I expected it to turn and go down the alley. And still shocked that that's the way it was done. But the city had no easement. But if they did, the city has a responsibility to service and maintain. That's our charter. Seventy-four point three. And that also comes up to the fact of rules. We have them so we can exist in a coherent manner for the good of everyone. So, it's the city's responsibility to maintain these lines. So the city failed again in not maintaining this line. And I wasn't here, nobody knew. It's like Lynn saying, this city is over a hundred years old. We have pipes everywhere. Just like when we were going up asking, talking about Tolu Falls, where everything's orange and water. There's no, we don't know what we've run into there. Concrete everywhere, granite, no, no pipes. How are we gonna fix all that? What we don't even know, getting into. Well, we have infrastructure here. Yes, we're talking about spending money for ordinances, for people to come in, but we also have to fix what we have. If we don't, it won't be here. Just like this gymnasium, just like this auditorium we're all in, the gymnasium down there where we grew up. If we don't fix it, we don't care, take care of it, we don't maintain it, it won't be here for the next generation. Just like this infrastructure is just as important. And if these pipes have been maintained and done properly, who knows? I can't,
Let me, let me ask a question. I'm a little confused. Dr. Hendricks, is the city trust intending that the city was supposed to maintain the lines on the private property?
No, my point, Thomas, is that it exited the property laterally. And laterally, it goes straight across to an alley, which is probably another eight feet. And this alley needs to be surveyed, in my opinion, to find out exactly where it is, the middle of it, and find out if that tie-in was actually on city property.
The tie-in to the city system, or the tie-in that was up on your property?
Yes, the original tie-in to the city system went straight laterally across.
I don't know, it went to the alley.
But it ran across somebody else's property before it got to the alley.
She doesn't own my alley. No.
So, the ask, you have several asks here, so will you please lay them out? So I understand them. So the first ask is for the city to pay half of that bill that was agreed upon. And, okay, so we made that decision, that's number one. Number two is, you would like the health department to come on your property and survey the dirt?
Right, and make sure, so, and even before this,
But, but, but the city wouldn't be liable for the contamination of your dirt?
Well, that's where it gets more complicated, doesn't it? In other words, you know, if, if I accept the money from the city, then there's a difference if I pay it all, then who was liable, who would go where? Or do we jointly say, okay, we wanna fix this problem? But it's still a problem about the health and the safety, and it doesn't even ring a call.
I, I do think it's, it's a problem. So you're asking for the city to contact to help somebody to look, look at something on your property?
Right, and make sure to survey, and then, Right, and make sure to survey and this is all of the damage that you've been...
Okay, so that's, so we're looking at number three, you're asking for the city to show you where the tap is for your other property?
Yes, I would like to know that.
Right, and then number four, you're asking for the city to survey that, make sure that a sewer line is on city farm?
Well, my guess is that the alley should be surveyed, so we know where that is. Just like in the alley in the back, the main sewer line goes down. That alley in the back can never be closed because that main sewer line can never be serviced. So, it needs to be, in my view, know whether there is a line that goes straight down to tie into the main sewer line on the alley. If that's the case, then this possibly, the office above could tie into that. It really need to be rerouted down. So... And if I had any information to work with, that had never been caught with, it's gotta go here. In other words, our responsibility is to go to the edge of the property where it was. And our responsibility is there. And that's where the city pays up. And the city didn't give an easement for it. And if they did give an easement for it, they'd been serviced. And if they never got one, then it was abandoned. So, one was never there.
And so, so it was just an illegal line run across, but there's no way to determine who did that? So it's just, I guess best to figure out how to fix it today?
Yeah, but we don't know if it, the main sewer line goes down the middle because that property, the way it's surveyed, comes into a little triangle there. We don't know if we're dealing with the sewer line for the city. It goes straight down through there. So that's why some, that's why I said earlier, we now not only need to determine this one, but for other people in the city, it needs to be determined. If they have a line where it crosses, is it an old line? Does the city need to get an easement so it can go in there and fix it? We had another property where there was a sewer line at the fence that the gentleman requested and there was difficulty, we had to go in there and fix it. We had to go in there and fix it on his property. I mean, that's what we do when we're good stewards and good neighbors. We find the best solution for everyone.
John, years ago, we had a banner crop of bamboo. And we didn't know why. Well, it was because we had a busted sewer line that went down through the bamboo. Okay, so, we paid for them to take the line in a whole nother direction. Because that line was an old pipe, disintegrated, and you can't know where they are.
Well, that's true, but you can know where the tie-ins are. In other words, that's all, where the tie-in is, is important.
So I think, I think that those remaining two, number three and number four, I think Mark, could you give some information on the cost to map those lines?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think that's something that we could talk about in the future as far as mapping those lines. The question one and number two, number two being the health department coming on the property and determining the safety of your dirt.
Right.
So, okay. And then number one, um, whether or not the city is gonna continue on and pay that remaining bill. Mark, you started in on what Megan had determined, what did Megan determine that was that half? Did she get anything determined?
I've seen it, she's had some other explanation of the work. Uh, because part of it is how much did he spend on actually running the line? How much is labor, it's just a lump sum of labor? And then he's got these other additional items laid out on there. And so again, it looks like we paid half of everything that was done, or we paid just to run this line. That's where the definition...
I can help some of this. Because I know, because I was there, as I said, as a representative. This comes out laterally, my feeling is the responsibility was only a thousand dollars, original quote, that's what they came in and told me, we break it up and it'll be here. When we found out that it was plugged and the decision had to be made, no, that's not gonna work. So, we had to run the entire length, a thousand feet. I mean, a hundred feet and thirty-five, so it's three thousand five hundred dollars. So, that's why I said, well, the city can do that for a third. And that's, you know, that's a thousand, but the, but the answer back to the city was, no. We don't wanna bring our equipment over the property and do that. So, I've seen this, okay, well, if that's the way you feel about it and you want this other company to do it and pay that cost and split, and split it, what am I, what am I gonna say? I'm trying to get this solved for everyone, the city, the people. So they can go back and run that line.
Let me answer the, uh, Thomas a question.
Yeah, of course.
Thomas, did I make a wrong decision in not allowing the city to come on the property for what Mr. Hendricks just said? You tell me legally, did I make a wrong decision?
The city force is sitting here doing their work.
Thank you. I, I will say that, um, in that conversation, I, I understand Tom, Thomas, I understand the law. I know that Mark was upholding that law, but we, we are a small city and I think it does need to be held on a case by case basis, but what's done is done. The bill that we're talking about, council, how would you like to proceed with that? What are your thoughts? What's, what's resolved of this? I think that everybody had already agreed to pay half of, half of that line being ran up through there. Y'all have anything you would add to that?
I've got a question. Is that gonna open up a can of worms for everybody that has this issue for the city to pay half?
Uh, that, that is a, that is a valid point. Counsel, I think y'all had already made the decision to move forward and pay after that. Y'all just wanna leave that the way it is.
I mean, I thought, we already agreed on that, so...
Okay. All right, that's taken care of. Any other further discussion on that? Um, Mark, you wanna proceed and take care of that with Megan?
Yes, sir.
Um, as far as, uh, Thomas, do you have anything to add on whether the city should send a health department in or, or some government agency to test the dirt?
My thought is that if the health department or EPD goes on their private property and finds a problem, it's gonna be the property owner's problem. So... Meaning if, if, if the property owner wants to make that invitation, the property owner probably needs to do that themselves.
Would it be the health department or EPD, Environmental Protection Division?
EPD is state, EPA is state, just so, you said it correctly there, but...
Since it's not a septic system or septic tank, I'm not sure if the health department is necessarily gonna do anything about it. Um, since it didn't go into state waters, I'm not sure the EPD is necessarily gonna be interested either. I mean, my, my thought is, is that really is a matter between the two private property owners and if there's any kind of evaluation.
John, are you okay with that as far as moving forward to get that paid?
Uh, yes.
And you can contact the health service?
Line's already been put out.
Okay. Any, any other further discussion?
Yes, I just, oh, I'm sorry, I just, I know, it may be on thread, you know, one of the, I know you and I reached on this. You know, wherever the cap was for the city, where it was connected to the main line. Whatever reason, line went through another property, purchased property and they, they cut it off and cemented it. And I know you made a comment, let's fix that problem, you know? Um, and that, you're right, that should've been addressed, you know, prior, but who knows why they, that... So, I mean, let's look at all there and if there was any problem, then I would know. But, yeah, obviously we're, that would be, I will be in, face that correctly.
I, I will say that in talking about this with Brian and with Thomas,
Right.
this is a regular occurrence throughout the city.
Gotcha.
This happens all the time. And again, in the thirties, forties and fifties, was anybody getting easements back then?
Right.
Or if they did get one, did anybody record it? And, you know, as a property owner, that's the first place I would look if I had this issue. I myself would go to the courthouse to pull the deed, to see if that's on there. And then I would know, hey, I've got an easement, let me show that to the city.
Sure, sure.
So, the courthouse, it either is black or white, you either have it or you don't. And if it hadn't been filed, you don't have it.
That's right.
And so, but, I think Thomas, you were pretty shocked. At least Thomas.
Looks like it.
He was shocked with the maps that Brian did show him. Because there are maps of lines running under existing houses
Right.
that date back in time. This is a real, real city issue. I've got somebody that says we had a, they had a water service and they blew out their water line. And they got one bid, they didn't know the plumber's name, and it's forty-four hundred dollars and they feel like the city should pay for that. Just like Ms. Moore said, where does it start, where does it end? And I will say that from a perception standpoint, if we do this for a council member, those citizens go, hey, they'll go that for me, I would go there.
Is, is it not time for us to look at putting together a process to where it's a standard process? No matter who you are, what your, how much property you got, or is your neighbor cementing your line or what? There is a process to follow that doesn't...
Going forward, we do have that, but back in the day,
Right.
you would have straight lines into your sewer tap. Nobody would have a lot.
But is, is there not a way to make a process that says, if your home was built in nineteen thirty and you are having an issue of this sort, this is the process?
And if they want, and if y'all from mayor and council wants the city to do that, we can open that box of worms. But, but get ready.
Yeah.
Because it could be a big number, that's not budget. I mean, I'll do whatever y'all tell me to do, it's y'all's decision, it's my job to run it out.
Right now, we're just having a conversation.
I understand, but this conversation is going to roll through the social media. And when the media picks up their packages, since they're not here.
Well, that's called being transparent.
That's exactly what I'm...
Yeah, I think that's what we're...
Absolutely. I have no problem with that.
Y'all give me... I think, I think as far as a policy, I think we probably should look at some policies on what the city should do as far as extending our booms on our private property. You can have a cost involved in that or something of that nature. I'd love some of that conversation to be pulled in in the next process. Because we do need some sort of conversation on that. All right. Let's move on to consideration of switching credit card accounts to Tradition Bank. Mark, you have a quick spot?
All right, we have South State Bank's credit cards at this moment. And, um, it was just to buy up all our accounts per the agreement for the loan documentation. And so it was just another step in that process. Is what we're doing now.
Next is a discussion of garbage truck, famous garbage truck.
Well, turn to the page of waste built. That is another amendment to the agenda, that's that page, yes. We have the bill. The truck has been picked up as of last Friday. And it ran perfectly on the way back. It operated yesterday and today perfectly. And we pressure washed and totally cleaned up Clarksville's truck last Thursday and delivered it. And I personally put down here to thank them for their truck as a use of that. And I really don't know how we can repay them other than it's an open door, let us know what we can do to help you. But I, I did thank the mayor the other day and she was most grateful. And so, if y'all see any of their mayor and council, I would encourage y'all to tell them thank you for that because it really was life-saving. But to do the repairs to the truck, they had estimated between twenty-five and forty thousand dollars, just as much as they, as they had to do. I am happy to say it came in under budget, twenty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. So we will need to amend the agenda to have this, so...
To move on, to amend the agenda to, uh, pay for this?
Yes.
The angles?
Correct. That was number four, John. That's it right there.
What was that estimate that we received, I think it's our...
It was between twenty-five to forty thousand. And so we came in just under twenty-five.
Well, okay. Any other further discussion?
Well, the next one was I wanted to be prepared after we met with Mike from Tradition Bank about the loan request, if we move forward with this, the truck, uh, the Mack truck chassis and the attached garbage cycle. I sent y'all pictures and everything, uh, two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And I asked Mike to give us terms of fifty thousand dollar amount payment. The loan amount would be one seventy-two, five, sixty months on a five point five fix rate for those sixty months, which is a very good interest rate on there.
And this is in the budget for next year?
That's correct, and basically that payment is gonna be, um, right at four thousand dollars a month. And we got it running in there for a budget of, uh, annual monthly payments of that, so it's gonna total forty thousand dollars. If y'all choose to move forward, but I, I wanted y'all at least to look at this. If we, the truck can be delivered the first week of January. The truck, chassis and the garbage compactor site are both on the site of the company in Birmingham. They're just waiting for us to say, let's move forward.
Can we shop around for some more trucks before we move forward?
We have, we can, we can, we had, they had two or three trucks for us to look at.
Uh-huh.
Um, some were bigger, some were smaller, some wasn't a Mack truck. The reason Ryan and I went with the suggestion of Mack truck, Allison, Mack truck sales can services a gangster at exit twenty-two. They can fully service this truck if there's an issue under the warranties and so forth. That was the key. But we can look for other...
Probably even different bodies, you know, Mack trucks, different bodies somewhere else. Just shop around to make sure that we're... But, and let's put this on the agenda for next month.
Good.
Is that okay with council? Good. All right. Um, we're a few minutes past our meeting time. So, let's take five minutes and pick up top.
Hey guys, they seem to be changing, gonna move the tape back over here. And put the road, and put the road tires back where they go. Because you're not...
I'm gonna have to, I don't stand right.
Yeah, if you wanna be here the rest of the meeting.
Been working on that all day.
Well, I thought it would come out. Do a little surface work. Um, because I don't think it's reaching all the way up to seventy-two. Yeah, plus the garbage truck. Pay invoice, but then, oh, then we had MPE for the eighty-five hundred dollars.
Guys, y'all will join me in a prayer and a pledge. Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening. We ask that you watch over us, protect us. We ask that you guide us in the decisions that we make for our city. We ask that those decisions, uh, move our city along to a better place and glorify your name. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Donnie, you?
I would love to. This is cadet Lisi Farias. Uh, she is new to our school, but she is taking leadership, uh, positions in our school. Uh, we have a school of sixteen hundred. And she is a brand new senior. She has hit the ground running. And they live here in Denver, so they're new to our town and we welcome them. And, uh, uh, when I found out that they lived in Denver, so I was like, can you come to the pledge for us? And y'all, thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And y'all do not have to stay for the rest of the.
All right, approval of the agenda. We have three modifications. Um, number seven, let's add number D as far as the invoice to the sewer plant. Um, under number eight, let's make an eight A. And add Megan as the admin for the banking accounts. And number nine, where it says A as first quote, let's do, uh, pay invoice. Any other further changes to the agenda? All right, we entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Right, sir, second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Next is approval of the minutes. Oh, no, let's jump back, most important part. Appearance and public comments. Is anyone here to speak? Anyone? All right, let's move forward to approval of the minutes. I don't want to rush you. After you looked over the minutes, please make your motion.
I would like to make a motion that we approved the minutes as is.
Thank you, sir. Once again, I don't want to rush you. Take your time, make a second when the time's appropriate.
I'll second.
Thank you, sir.
Well, sorry. Tap of, um, the meeting. On page two. At the very, very bottom, a motion was made by Councilman Allen, T W O wave. On, on page two. On page two, the word two, it should be two.
Yes.
So I would like to make a correction, I guess, motion to amend for that one tap.
A second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor to accept the amended minutes? Very good. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to consideration of alcohol license for our new restaurant in town. Thank you. Do we have any discussions? Or do we want to go ahead and vote to issue that license?
I would like to make a motion to go ahead and issue or vote to issue the alcohol license for Holden Over Soul Farm Kitchen and Wurstel Bar.
Thank you, sir. A second? All those in favor? Very good. Thank you. Next is consideration of approval of quotes. Um, on tab two, the first one is the keener construction. This is the one from the sewer bore of twenty thousand dollars. We'll need a motion to accept that invoice and pay that invoice.
Make a motion to approve and pay this invoice for keener construction for twenty thousand dollars even.
Thank you, a second? All those in favor to pay this invoice? Very good. Next is invoice for Hazel Creek Crossing. This is the, uh, I guess this is an estimate, but we need to approve this estimate to be paid once it comes in, once the work's complete, between seventy-five hundred and ten thousand dollars. Do we have a motion to accept this estimate for this work?
Make a motion to, um, approve this estimate for keener construction if it's deemed that this is actually necessary to do.
Thank you, sir. A second? All those in favor? Very good. Next is the, uh, next quote. Uh, Mark, do you want to enunciate and end this company?
Viola.
Viola?
That's the way I say it.
Okay, all right, very good.
Yeah, what you did, I'm sorry.
This is the twenty-six, uh, twenty-six thousand dollar, every twenty-six thousand dollar quote to change out the filters in the sewer plants. Do we have any further discussion or entertain a motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion to accept the quote.
Okay, very good. A second?
Second.
All those in favor to move forward with the twenty-six thousand dollars to Viola? Very good, thank you. Next is the invoice to add an engine voice or a, um, fabricate, a, a overhead voice at the wastewater plant of eighty-five hundred dollars to MPE services. Any other further discussion or move forward to accept this? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept this.
Thank you. A, a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor to move forward with eighty-five hundred dollar quote? Very good. Next is consideration of switching the credit card account to Tradition's Bank. Um, how does that motion need to be written?
That we'll just continue moving out banking services from South State to Tradition of our credit card services.
All right, guys, we'll entertain a motion to move that credit card account to Tradition's Bank.
Make a motion to, um, transfer the credit card account from, to Tradition's Bank.
Very good. A second?
Second.
All those in favor to move the credit card? Very good. Next is adding Megan to our admin for all the Tradition's banking accounts. Do we have a motion to move Megan as the admin? Thank you, sir. A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Very good. Next is discussion of garbage truck. We have a quote in our packet. I would like, uh, as discussed, a motion to table that until we see further, uh, quotes and more quotes on a, on a garbage truck. Do we have a motion to table? Or would you like to move forward with a quote that's in your packet?
Make a motion to table.
Thank you, sir. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor to table discussion of the garbage truck until we see more bids? Very good. Oh, yeah. Next is the, uh, is the repair invoice. That repair invoice is for twenty-four, a little over twenty-four thousand dollars for our current garbage truck that we had to do. Um, we just need a motion to pay that invoice.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, sir. A second to pay the invoice for twenty-four thousand dollars. Thank you. All those in favor? Very good.
So is the, um, gar, our old garbage truck is going to be running, um, next week?
It started running yesterday and today.
It's running yesterday and today, okay.
We are back in the Denver service truck.
Now, the plans are not to sell the truck, right?
It would be completely, it would totally depend upon Mayor Council's goal. Because if you do have a brand new truck, the odds of having not a wood should be there with your warranties and so forth to have a condition. So, um, it would be just y'all's decision if you want surplus. At this point in time, what's in the budget is to pay down fifty thousand dollars and make monthly payments on it for sixty months. If y'all decided to surplus it, we could also sell it, make a principal deduction on that note. To do that, so that's just, uh, we haven't, now that we just have it back, it'd be also our research to see what is the truck worth now at this time? Because again, the truck's gonna drive two point two miles in half of that once a week on a Monday or in the middle of the half is Tuesday. And then it's gotta go out to the dump and back. So have you mind if you're putting on the truck? Is it, how far is the landfill from the city?
There and back, probably twenty, twenty-five miles.
Okay. So they're putting fifty miles a week on the truck. So I just don't know if we need a reserve. But specifically, we'll have those conversations.
So i- is part of the warranties, like if something were to happen to, if we purchased a new truck, something were to happen to it, we would be able to get a backup truck from?
That has not been discussed. But the odds of it being down like that is just, just like you buy your own car, you, a new car, do you trade in your old car? Or do you keep it in case the new car's gonna go to the shop?
Questions? Questions to be asked? Very good. Next, let's move on to manager's report review of financials. Mark, what you got?
All right, I'll make this as short and sweet as I can. We did have our bid opening today for the sewer bore. I think there's more than that. And, uh, the sewer bore bids came in today. And with turnip seed, we had those publicly opened at two P M. today. You'll see a discrepancy in this, this is just one page.
Oh, okay.
So I had those publicly opened. But, uh, in this, with turnip seed, this is a project that started six to seven years back about the sewer bore. And the engineering work and everything has been done, been worked on for two, three years since then. They were hoping to see the bid come in around four hundred thousand dollars range. But again, that price has been from a while back. We all know about inflation. And I, me off the bid amounts, there's gonna be two items that we'll come back to address on why there's a discrepancy as much as they are in the three numbers. First bid they opened up was UWS Incorporated, company have trying Georgia, which is above wrong. Five hundred thirty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars. The next bid was Will Corp, Incorporated, same, same job site, same total work. Two point five, two, two million, five hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars. Third bid was Thrift Company, which is a company have guilty. Their bid was a million, two thirty, four twenty-three, fifty-seven cents. As the engineer and I went through the bids, there's two line items that make up these difference. One of the bids has a number of hidden rock of six hundred fifty thousand dollars. The lowest bid has a hidden rock at zero. So there's six hundred seven thousand dollars. Uh, and then the other one was probably at about seventy-five or a hundred thousand for his bidding, uh, a million, three less than the highest bid. The second one is the casing. The casing is what they had to get under the rope. Uh, they accounted, they rejected this for the casing costs three hundred dollars a foot. Our lowest bidder came in roughly at six hundred dollars. The higher, the other two bids, one came in at three thousand, the other one came in at like four thousand dollars a foot. So if all three bids would have come in over a million dollars, they would, they would have recommended to Mayor Council to reject the mix. But that didn't happen because again, when the first one opened up at five thirty-five, we're like, okay, that's close. And then the other two, and that's the two justifications of the difference in pricing. We will get a full report of that because Red Astor brings all the, all the three bids back to the office. They double check the numbers, confirm everything and double check. So you'll be able to see those numbers. And I may have been off using round numbers on those two different items.
So as part of the, the big jump in price, he said they're factoring in hidden rock. And the first one says?
Zero.
Zero on that.
So they were encouraged to go out there to the site. Go look and see if you think there's any rock over there. Make a bid according to that. And then what we have here is everything, y'all choose. We have a sixty day notice to approve this bid and this contract to be from UWS Incorporated. So we've got the December meeting, the January meeting. And that way, his prices are locked in for that sixty day timeframe. So we'll be reviewing the numbers once we get this back. Because again, keep this in mind, this bid has nothing to do with the sewer line that run from the, from the pump station. This is just four under, put in the sewer line and come back to get out of the Georgia power right away. That's all that's being done. And that gets into whether we made, all the engineering work has been done for that line. So, and this is not a job that in-house you can do, run it, because that's going to be in that marshing area. Where you've got to have platforms, send a bigger backhoe and that, so that is another project that would have to be bid out if the engineering is done.
But Greg's going to come on our, our next meeting, possibly give us?
I could ask him to, but typically they do a full review and they send that to me, but I can have them come to do the explanations.
There's no need, as long as there's enough discussion.
So, so that was a bigger discussion there. It's a lot of info right here. This is about the FEMA. Uh, this is not in your package yet. We worked on getting this info all the way through, back through the meeting. This is about the radios, being able to pre-purchase them. Our FEMA documents of the award of letter and the warranties and step by step what we have to do. So I'll be sending this out to y'all review, because I'm waiting on Thomas to say, okay, go. So we won't take possession of these. We'll have prepaid the negotiated amount. So if it comes out in twen- in twenty twenty-five or twen- in twenty twenty-six, we still have what we paid for, and our warranty starts when we see.
We have to pay for it now because we have a deadline of the grant to use.
So we'll see this, read it, and we're waiting on Thomas to say, everything is in order. Tax bills went out unfortunately for anybody last week. Uh, update on the post office, we're going to have a Zoom meeting Monday, uh, November twenty-seventh in our office with the next round, and that's when I should start seeing some numbers and their expectations of what's going to happen. So we'll go forward at that point in time. Cemetery update from Faith with Georgia Mountain Regional, they're starting coming out this week to start doing their actual GPS marking of the other range that they had not marked. So everything is in line. Uh, I asked her to do, to add to herself the service to look at pricing of our cemetery uh, plots compared to others in the area, to see where we are at, because right now we're at a price of four hundred dollars. Park update. Let's say this close, this close. The bricklay took two months. We finally got it out there. So it's really thrilling to be back, but that did its work, that did its work. And, uh, so they're in there right now doing the flooring with the flake seal finish. They will finish that on Thursday. Uh, petitions and bathroom doors and janitor closet door being installed on Friday. Electrician is ready to finish up his lights underneath in the building area. And then the plumber is prepared to come in after that to install plumbing fixtures. And Ryan went today to go sit plumbing to pick out those fixtures. So we did a, uh, builder grade, commercial, handicap accessible hot pullets and all those things. And so, and then the last thing, the final grade is pretty much done and hanging around the building and the form to the concrete. Form to the concrete was supposed to go tomorrow, but the concrete being finished inside, we couldn't have both of them at the same time. So hopefully, subject to weather next week, go for that. And then we have to go again. Then it's luck. We're ready for a real fight again.
Excellent.
So we will have to plan that accordingly, and, um, so obviously, I hope to be end of October, I didn't plan on a bricklay meeting in two months. And, um, it is what it is, and then, um, so we're very close. So holiday, just you know, couple of dry days and nice weather we're having, we can get all that and stuff. Uh, Donnie tomorrow is participating in a firehouse burn project with our fire department, and I'm suing some of the others in the county of cities. Donnie will actually suit up tomorrow to go be led into the burning house and to see what they do. And I don't want to go out of town. I don't know if you can be the first one to go with that. But he got suited up today and finished, so he will be producing on that. What's the timing?
Uh, I've got a meet down there at the firehouse at ten thirty in the morning.
And I think they track, I think it's involved, isn't it? And it's supposed to be out till four o'clock. So he's wanting a real lot of experience. Any council wants to still go?
We want to see video.
That's what the kids experience that day.
Yeah, we just talked about the weight, the whole thing. We saw what all of them wear. I do have to say, now that I know I, I emailed y'all about this, Kay, Kay Lancaster is in one of our, our sewer plant working as a city employee, but working under E M I supervision. Kay is twenty-three and a half years old, brand new father, getting married in January, and I'm so proud of him for all his education that he's gotten accomplished. Well, the problem is, guess what happened when you get all those certifications? People start calling your number because they see that he's been certified. And, um, he notified Ryan yesterday, came to see me yesterday afternoon, he thought I'd be mad at him. Man, I'm not, not, not at all, I'm disappointed, because twenty-three and a half, you've accomplished a lot. And his last day will be November twenty-ninth, and, uh, I'm excited for him. Some, some folks in the city are sad, because again, his knowledge is as bright as a young person to do that, and I said, I can't fault you at all. So, that being said.
What's, what's the plans after?
Well, the plan is, what you and I and Brian talked yesterday and today, um, Dalton is the other employee that's down there. They're going to increase his ability to do some of the things, and, um, um, Brian will select somebody to start doing some other training on doing well testing, because when, um, Mark retired back in January, February, Kay picked up his roles of doing all that testing. So Ryan will pick somebody E M I, will probably get a larger bill right now, because they'll have to be on the on-site to do that. And it's one of these things, if you pay this money to get somebody educated, it's not wrong for them to leave, because somebody's called about that. Very few people have this many certifications. So the question is, do we want to go through this process again, spend a couple thousand dollars in time? Or would you rather pay somebody out of E M I, somebody like that to do? So that will be a philosophy question we'll look at ongoing. So.
Excuse me, one thing that you might want to consider is if you pay for their education, part of that should be that they stay with the city a designated period of time before they move on.
And we've discussed that, especially with what I work on right now, the handbook. It's one of those mixed emotions. I know different police departments have days of that sort. Um, but that's for these guys to think about, because we can do that. We can do that. Thank you. Alright, to look at our September activity for our Denver Police Department. They responded to two hundred and sixty-seven calls, four domestic, four verbal, one domestic, one service call, E R, fourteen traffic accidents, sixty-six traffic stops, and issued eighteen citations. There were nine different events and reports completed and forty-eight hours of training during that month. I'm just looking at several pages just to hit, serious highlights here. The October, the October fire department calls, there were ninety-five calls for the month of October. The department completed a hundred and seventy-five hours of training. The extra fire truck that we had surplus, did sell for fifteen thousand dollars to Irving County. Uh, they completed three fire safety education events, like for the private company that doesn't perform for a P M O and different schools of that sort. Uh, they repurchased the command by project, which that, that is the white four-door, um, power truck truck. So where we've been on other calls because of the appearances they had in that truck. And again, a sensitive fire chief Palmer gave us a ten-year, uh, year plan to Mayor Council last month. The breakdown of the calls, fifty-eight EMS rated calls, and out of those fifty-eight, forty-eight percent were outside of city limits. Nine vehicle accidents, six fire calls, eight false alarms, and six of those being inside limits. City limits, and then a fourteen public assist. The water and sewer plan are both operating within our permit limits. This is my most important moment that I want to read out, but is that water saves. We purchased from Baldwin.
It's like the mains ended. I don't know.
I think that's for Thomas.
Oh, they just did the forty minutes of the panel, they didn't get that on our count, yes. So we did just again, public streaming.
No, is it public streaming or just for Thomas?
No, Thomas, big on, now Thomas left Olden Hill and he had to get off by seven. So that just ended our stream. But we'll have to get that. So we purchased twenty-six million gallons from Baldwin, six point four million from Dakota. Our Gersin well has, has been turned off at present time, and might as well produce seven million. So right at fifty-nine million gallons of water in the month of October.
It's gone up from September.
Yep. Now, I think we were sixty-two last time, but, but close enough, all being the same, for the cooler temperatures, we'll see that go away, because that's the first kind of numbers. Uh, we turn to our financials on page one. Uh, looking at our cash balances, general fund is two hundred and fifteen thousand, D B A a hundred and sixty-three thousand, Redmond County, that's that forty-one thousand dollars CD we just moved this month to Tradition. And then the slots here is like seven hundred thousand, and, um, overall cash is three point one six nine. And again, if you look down for September, our, uh, month of liquidity has continued to rise. And we're up from two point five one to two point five two in our month of income. So we are going the right way, it's just a slow process. Um, our debts with water, sewer, we're all aligned, general fund. We just had those one, but it's a four, six thousand, ninety-four thousand as our annual payments. And, um, on the fire and the police cars, and then the D B A loan is roughly eight thousand dollars a month. One thing is five for the, uh, separate revenue expenses. We have total revenue of the water, department round number of five hundred seventeen thousand, and, uh, operating expenses of two hundred forty-one thousand with the net income of two seven- two hundred seventy-six thousand dollars for the month. Turn one page over to our revenue percentages. Uh, our total to go in the last three months shows us a million and seven for remaining income. So we'll be pushing that, that averages out to five hundred eighty-three thousand dollars per month for the next three months. And, um, on our expenses for the year to date, we had a million and nine. And, um, to hit that number of our budget amount of a million and nine, we've taken average of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand a month in expenses. So what I'm telling you is we didn't hit enough to four to get expenses, so that would be three times the amount for us to exceed our expenses. So what our expenses are, should, unless something comes up, we should be well under budget on our expenses. The income will be very close to hitting our gross number. So, page seven, go over the slots hours here. It's slot six, we've got a hun- this is important, we're talking about these projects on the water and sewer with the sewer bore. We've got a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars left of water and sewer, and it's slot six. And we've got forty-nine thousand dollars remaining in that slot six of roads, streets, and bridges. And water and sewer, we have, and it's slot seven, six hundred eighty-one thousand for water and sewer. And, um, roads, streets, and bridges, we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So combined there, between six and seven, we've got eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars available for water and sewer. Roads, streets, and bridges, we have two hundred twenty-nine thousand. And this under the public facilities slots, that we have ninety. This, these segments are running thirty days, forty-five days behind. Instead of we've got ninety-six hundred dollars left for a slot of the public facilities, that number's zero. So we have expended all of that money there, but we had it, y'all budgeted it, we got it. And, uh, so those are good positions that we're in, and we're roughly hitting thirty-two thousand dollars a month. It's slots, slots collections each month, that will take us along. So overall, we're in good shape, everything's happening, and I feel very good about where we are as soon as we get our, with our monies. So with that, I'll begin.
Baffling. Baffling.
Oh, oh, yes, thank you. I didn't have that on my list, thank you very much. This Saturday, the eighteenth, at ten thirty, we will have a rededication of the Brentley Moore Ball Field. And the rededication, or maybe it's the first time we dedicate for the, um, uh, Eagle Project of the water fountain that Ronnie and his guys were able to rebuild and put it back together and have a water faucet for, for golf water. And the banquet is supposed to be there, and I'm out of town, so Sean and the mayor will be handling that. It'll be a short presentation, I'll, I'll hold it later, because it's at ten thirty. So please put it on the calendar, try to show up if you can to support the, this project, because it is a tremendous asset with that park out there. With that, I conclude, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Alright, let's move on to, uh, another line item for appearance and public comments. Open the floor up, anyone like to speak? Next, let's move on to, uh, consideration of, uh, to move in executive session. We, do we have anything? Got some of the other thing for executive session? Okay. Next, we just need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Second. All those in favor to adjourn? Very good. Hello. Thank you, guys.
Don, remember you're doing the, the motion to adjourn next time. I'm not going to let you off the hook, but none of us are going to speak. We're just going to sit here, we'll sit here all night if you don't do it.